Hi, Mary.
Can you hear me? Awesome.
Mary, can you hear me? If you can, turn your mute off.
Yes, I can.
Okay, good. Kathy, can you hear me? Okay, your mute is on, Kathy. Kelly, you're muted.
Yes, I can hear.
You in the Village Hall, Jerry?
Yeah.
Oh.
Everybody see that? Unmute.
Yeah. Can you let Georgia Ann in? She's on a separate computer.
No. Okay.
Georgia. Unmute. Georgia Ann, unmute.
Wally, unmute. Hello. Okay. Voice check. Let me call names. Mary?
Here.
I'm here. Chris?
Yeah.
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Jack?
Here.
George?
Here.
Wally?
Here.
And Georgia Ann.
Yep.
Okay. We do have a guest with us who will be talking to us a little bit later. Let me confer with him for a minute. Okay, all right. I think we're set.
Uh-oh, he's coughing.
Like where it says from the very bottom, stop video or something.
Share screen.
Stop video. You see that little arrow? Change virtual background. Okay.
But you don't have any other things in there.
Okay, remember, George and Georgia Ann, everybody else, if you're talking, we're all hearing you.
All right.
Okay. All right. I'd like to call the regular board meeting via Zoom for Village of Haynesville to order at 6:34 on April 26, 2022.
The public hearing.
The, oh, we're doing, correct, we're doing the public hearing first for the budget roll call. Kathy will call each of you individually and then please respond.
Trustees or Mayor Jerry Daley?
Here.
Trustees George Duberstein?
Here.
Chris Chanelwith?
Yeah.
Wally Crease?
Here.
Mary Koval?
Here.
Jack Chanelwith?
Here.
And Georgia Ann Duberstein.
Here.
And also President Kelly Kinsley.
All right. We will forego the pledge in the Zoom mold. We've had roll call. We've got a quorum. Need a motion, and please raise your hand for a motion for the approval of the agenda. All right, Wally, first, second, Georgia Ann. Roll call.
Trustees George Duberstein?
Aye.
Chris Chanelwith?
Aye.
Wally Crease?
Aye.
Mary Koval?
Aye.
Jack Chanelwith?
Aye.
And Georgia Ann Duberstein.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Just for everybody's information, there's a raised hand symbol at the very bottom of your.
There is, but I'll more than likely see your hand go up.
Okay.
I've not practiced enough on Zoom to be real good yet.
Well, here's, here's what it looks like. See that thing up in the corner?
Yeah, it just took you to this. Okay. All righty. Kelly or Mary or Kelly, whoever's going to, presentation of proposed appropriation ordinance.
I could lead it. Good evening. For the appropriation hearing, the notice has been published in the Daily Herald back on April 8, 2022. From the last time the board met to review the draft of the appropriation ordinance, I enclosed a piece of paper with all the changes in your packet. They're highlighted by funds and what those changes were within each of those funds between administration, streets, the capital reserve, the water fund, and the capital outlay. Does anyone have any questions regarding any of these changes that you need to ask Mary or myself or the mayor?
Hands, please.
George.
Mary, I'll tell you what, I would do it this way. Mary, questions?
No.
Chris?
No.
Let's see. Jack?
No.
George?
No.
Wally?
No.
Georgia Ann?
There was a question that George mentioned to me about, where was it, George? Thing about the personal expenses?
I checked with Kelly offline and got an answer to it.
Oh, thanks for letting me know.
I'll see you later.
Okay, never mind.
You are being recorded. All right, so we have no questions? Any, no further discussion? Motion to adjourn the public hearing. Hands. George, second. Mary? Roll call.
Trustees George Duberstein?
Aye.
Chris Chanelwith?
Aye.
Wally Crease?
Aye.
Mary Koval?
Aye.
Jack Chanelwith?
Aye.
And Georgia Ann Duberstein.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:38. I need a motion to open the regular board meeting for the Village of Haynesville at 6:38 on April 26, 2022. Wally for first, Georgia Ann for second. Roll call.
Um. Well, you didn't need a first or a second. We just are opening the meeting.
We need a roll call for it, don't we now?
So Mayor Jerry Daley?
Here.
Trustees George Duberstein?
Here.
Chris Chanelwith?
Yeah.
Wally Crease?
Here.
Mary Koval?
Here.
Jack Chanelwith?
Here.
And Georgia Ann Duberstein.
Here.
Okay.
As far as public comments go, I've told Mr. Knaff that he will have a chance to speak under the mayor's report. He's the author of the letter that's in your packet and wanted to say a few words. I'm just thinking that would be the appropriate place. So moving on, need a motion for the, to approve the consent agenda. Motion, Mary, second, George. Roll call.
Trustees George Duberstein?
Aye.
Chris Chanelwith?
Aye.
Wally Crease?
Aye.
Mary Koval?
Aye.
Jack Chanelwith?
Aye.
And Georgia Ann Duberstein.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Reports, finance, Mary, you doing anything or waiting until business?
Waiting till business.
Okay.
Um, Jerry, back up. You have to approve the agenda.
We just did.
You skipped, you did the consent agenda. You have to do the agenda.
Back up. Needed a motion to approve the agenda. I've got Georgia Ann first and Wally second. Roll call.
Trustees George Duberstein?
Aye.
Chris Chanelwith?
Aye.
Wally Crease?
Aye.
Mary Koval?
Aye.
Jack Chanelwith?
Aye.
And Georgia Ann Duberstein.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Kathy. Public report. Wally?
You've guys got the report from, from Tom, Tim, I mean, I should say, we'll just leave it at that. I'll keep it, keep it short.
All right, thank you. It's in your packet. Community events, George?
Today secured our food vendor for the reenactment in October. So that's all I have on that. And then Georgia Ann and I had this community cleanup on Saturday. It was very successful. We had nine students from Central, Grayslake Central and Carmel High School and a resident, and we cleaned up all of Haynesville Road on both sides from Route 120 to Washington. Some portions of Washington Street on the north end of the village and some portions of the Roots 120 and 134. Given that we only had a few people, but it worked out pretty well. And we collected nine bags of trash, which I put in the Dempsey Dumpster so that Public Works doesn't have to worry about it. And I did provide the mayor and clerk and deputy clerks a report of that nature, as well as an article for the newsletter.
That's all I have. George, the certificates have been signed by me. I gave them back to Row this evening, or she'll have them tomorrow. So she'll be looking for Georgia Ann's signature and then she'll mail them. Chris, all right. Chris, you want to talk about food trucks?
Yeah, thank you. So I've been working extremely hard. I've actually managed to secure our first food truck vendors coming out. We have both a savory truck and dessert trucks beginning on May the 12th, and it goes through August, and it's on Thursdays. Kathy and I have been working together to get this accomplished. And between both of us, we've managed to get all the vendors, all the documentation that they need. And they are now returning a fillable form for all the information that's needed. It's on our website, so they can just log in and get that signed and Kathy gets it immediately. So I have, I've made up a Facebook page for our food trucks for the Village of Haynesville. We have about 90 some members on there already, and if you could just pass the word around to your friends around town that we have this Facebook page, please have them log in. I'll be having announcements of which food trucks are coming and the dates that they're going to be there.
And did you say the times that they'll be in our parking lot?
They'll be in our parking lot from 4:00 to 7:30 at night.
Thursdays, okay. Well, let's not hope it's morning.
No, no, so.
Okay, well, very good. Kathy and Chris, great job. Looking forward to it. We will be, Kathy's going to put something up on the webpage advertising it within the next day or so. We're going to put it on our Facebook account. We're going to talk to a couple individuals who have, what's the name of that app, Kathy? The Neighborhood?
Oh, Neighborhood, Neighborhood Watch.
We'll try to put it out there.
Next door neighborhood, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any way you can think to put it out there in any of your social media contacts, we'd appreciate it.
The other thing I have to say about it is that we have just, I've had to go around and around with a couple of the vendors, but we've managed to get them all booked and get them, get them in there, so.
Could you explain again how we'll know which ones are coming?
They'd be, I'll have them all posted on our Facebook page, the Haynesville Food Truck Facebook page with the date and which trucks are coming. So we'll have a dessert and a savory.
Kathy?
Can we have it on the website as well? Because I don't use Facebook.
Hold on, hold on. Kathy?
Okay, so I have put on the village website, the calendar. I've done May and June. I have to finish July and August. So that's on every Thursday from 4:00 to 7:30. It says who the food trucks are and the savory and the dessert.
Great.
Tomorrow, I'm putting it on Facebook for the Village Hall. And if you guys want to, those who have Facebook can share it and, you know, turn it on to your friends, that would be great.
All right, thank you. Remember, hands if we get, if there's a need. All right. Great Age Club, Georgia Ann? Hang on a minute. George had his hand. Yes, sir.
Yeah, just, just a quick question. As, as I mentioned earlier, I've got a food vendor for the reenactment, but the dessert truck is of interest, so if I can get some of that information, I would appreciate it.
Just give Kathy a call.
Okay.
Okay, Kathy?
George, I provided you with the list.
Oh, it's on that list?
And it's on that list. And then, Chris, I think you had something you wanted to add.
Yeah, um, so I noticed that I put out on the May the 12th vendors that are coming to the village, and I saw that it got posted on the Haynesville Grayslake Facebook page. So it's out there as well.
Okay, excellent. All right, Georgia Ann, Great Age Club.
There wasn't, there wasn't anything particular. Oh, yes, there is. Next month, we're having Charmaine Lidd from Encompass Rehab Institute of Libertyville. Come and talk to the seniors about them. They're a new rehab center. They're unique in that it's a short-term, 14-day rehab clinic. And she asked to speak with us, and that's what we set up for, for the fifth, for the 5th of May.
Okay. Paratransit?
Okay. I sent out the PowerPoint to all the trustees so that we didn't have to figure out how to do it on Zoom. The reason that I wanted to make you aware of this service is hopefully people will be talking about it and they may be asking you questions. So I didn't want you to look like deers in headlights. I wanted to give you some information so that you would be prepared if anyone asked. What is happening is Lake County Paratransit Service will start May 1st. And it's something that has been going on since 2005. Lake, you've heard me talk about Lake County Consolidated Transportation Services Committee. And that's when that started, and that's where the concern for paratransit began. It's for seniors 60 and older and for the disabled. It's curb-to-curb service. And it's just amazing. I joined, the latest that I could think that I joined was 2009. It may have been sooner, and I've been on the executive committee. What's so amazing is how many of us, except for Jack that is a project manager, actually see something get started and actually, after all these years, see it completed. So it's very exciting. And on the 6th of May, they're having a little ceremony at the transportation office, and I'm going to be there. Just an aside, I coined the term Ridley County. It's curb-to-curb service. The, the person has to register on the, on the PACE Call Center. And, and then they call and set up a time when they need to be picked up and, and when they would need to be picked up at the other end. The, the fee is based on how far they're going and.
Georgia Ann, pardon my rudeness, but is all this contained in the PowerPoint or the information you sent us?
Yeah, yeah. I just, I just wanted to reiterate. But the other thing that, that I wanted to mention is the most kept secret of PACE, and that's on-demand, and that's also a curb-to-curb service. It's available to everyone. Anyone can call and, and with it, and it's as close as an hour before you need to go. You can call, and the area is much smaller. I believe that in your packet, you have information about that and the, and the area that it covers. But that's something that few people know about, and they're trying to get the word out, so I just want you to be aware of it as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk?
Okay, so I spoke to Lake County Clerk's Office today. And our June 28th general primary election and the November 8th general election for the Village of Haynesville, we will not be a polling place for those two dates. They are going to do a polling place at Prairie View due to the size of the the general primary election. So they feel, Lake County Clerk's Office feels that we're too small here with our, excuse me, with our parking lot. So hopefully, we will get the polling place here for April of 2023. But the next two election days will not be here. They'll be at Prairie View. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Next up will be Mr. Knaff. Copy of his letter is in your packet. I've met with the gentleman twice. I'm going to let him sit here and share some comments with you. And what I'm looking for will be, in our discussion afterwards, consensus of how to proceed. All right, Mr. Knaff, you're up.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Okay. Hello, everyone. Basically, I'll just keep it short. And the issue I really have is about the the $5 fee that is charged to any resident who wants to continue receiving a paper billing from the village. The reason being that I, I don't think that residents should be billed for the cost of billing them, basically. Past practice over the last, you know, several decades, I've been here since 1994, and I've probably received over 330 mailings that I did not have to pay an additional fee in order to get the paper billing or any kind of communication or from the village. Currently, the Consumer Protection Agency says that there's been an uptick in the latest wrinkle in the arena of billing abuse, which is billing residents or consumers for the cost of billing them. Many bill processing charges bear little or no relationship to the actual cost of preparing and mailing the bill. Some, some say that other villages surrounding Haynesville are, are doing this. And in my research, I have found to the contrary. I've got copies of billing procedures from the surrounding villages of Grayslake Gurnee, Lake Villa, Libertyville, Mundalion, Round Lake, Round Lake Beach, and Volo that do not have an additional administration fee to receive a mailed water or utility bill. So basically, I think that we should consider removing the $5 administration fee to receive the mailed paper bill. And maybe there's a better way to do it, such as maybe a discount for, you know, a month or two for people who want to make the change. Or I just don't feel that we should have to be billed for billing. And that's pretty much my case.
Any questions for Mr. Knaff? Raise your hand. I'll call. Okay, no questions. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your time.
Discuss a little bit, and if you agree to request, I will send you a written response.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay. George?
The resident has some interesting points. And certainly, as we look at what other villages around us do, it could be compelling. The idea of maybe having a discount of some sort for those who make the transfer to email might be a better approach. And that way, we're not, if you want to use the term, penalizing those who get a paper billing. How much, how much does it really cost us to do the paper billing, aside from postage? I know there's some time in preparation and so forth.
Friar? And Kelly or Kathy, correct me on this. I think we're at roughly $400 a month in postage. Then there is the envelopes, paper, and staff time.
How many residents do we send the billing to?
Let's see, we have how many, is 459? Is that correct, Kelly? The number you gave me this one? No, no, that's number signed up. We have roughly 700 mailed billings. Kelly, you got something?
It was like about seven, I don't have my sheet in front of me, but it was like about 735 bills being generated. And as of today, with everyone that signed up for e-bill, we'll probably have around 266 to produce a bill for. So people, there's a lot of people that are welcoming this. Some of them are the, the younger generation that are coming in, and they're like, oh, yeah, I don't want a paper bill. I want it emailed. Stuff like that. I did, probably over the last year, when we were looking at doing this, we did look at different surrounding villages. I do not have those notes here with me at the House. But there were some villages that had a monthly fee. And that's all, it was called just a monthly fee addressed, assessed on their monthly bills. It didn't say what it was for, what it was to help out with, and that administration purposes. So our village is unique, as in we have never charged a monthly processing fee or a monthly fee.
One thing I'd like to, just in case you recently read Mr. Knaff's letter, one mistake I want to point out or correct is that we are not demanding that they pay online. We're not demanding e-payment. This is just reception of the bill versus mailing a bill. Other thoughts or comments? Georgia Ann? George Anne?
I agree with George. I think that Mr. Coniff's ideas are um good, especially if we want somebody to do something, we should reward their actions. And maybe just for two months, because it sounds like we've gotten a lot of positive movement of the residents over to the um email version. So if we said, um, I don't know, five dollars or some percentage or whatever you want to do, maybe five dollars is the easiest, um, for the next two months to get more people to transfer over to the email. That that might be uh a solution that would um make what we're trying to do happen.
You're gonna be surprised with this answer coming from me, but for the oh two hundred some that have recently signed up, do we pay them back five dollars for two months? In our effort to save money by going to e-billing?
I I just need to understand, I thought Kelly said that there are now only two hundred and some people that are still getting um paper.
Two hundred and six. No, it's two hundred and sixty-six that are still receiving paper bills. What I'm asking is, do we, hang on, do we just give them the five dollar? If if we use five dollars, give them the five dollar discount to sign up? Or all the new signups we've had over the last couple of months?
Wait, wait a minute. You just said two hundred and some odd were receiving paper bills? That's what she did.
Yes.
I thought it was two hundred that came over to the email.
No, 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 no.
Seven hundred were getting paper bills.
No, no, what what Kelly said. Kelly, run it again, please.
Approximately, there are seven hundred and thirty-five bills. Out of the seven hundred and thirty-five bills, from when we tried, when we started getting people moving over to e-bill and then pushing for this, we are down to two hundred and sixty-six left that have not signed up for the e-bill. And we have people that are exempted. So we've have a separate list of those. Some people are, we have exemptions for the people that do not have email addresses. So of course, we're not going to charge them the fee. We have uh some seniors that do not want to do this, so we're not charging them the fee as well.
Could you give us an idea how many?
So right now, we haven't charged anybody the five dollar fee, right?
We have not, that starts with the May billing cycle.
The May, May cycle, right?
For the ordinance, um, May first, anybody getting that bill. So the next billing cycle is May fifteenth-ish. Whoever gets the bill that's not exempt will have a five dollar fee on there.
Yeah, so if we, if we do not en- enforce it, okay? Are you thinking that you would, that some of those five hundred people that just signed up would reverse that and go back to paper billing?
Your guess is as good as mine.
Okay. Nice question. Of course, you, I I I didn't, I vote, I voted against this anyways from the beginning on. But the thing is, like I said, like we, like uh, everybody's been saying, George and George Anne and everything else and and the resident, you know, encouraging people to do it versus uh, how would you say it, penalizing for not doing it? Uh, is the question that he brought up. And I think that's a good valid question. And I think that we should pursue that before we do any of this uh, any further than what we need to go and just re- rego- rego back at this and look at it from all sides, what all angles? Find out what the other villages do, make sure that that's correct, and then we go forward from there.
I, I believe when we were discussing this back at the board meetings, I had notes about what villages were doing what for each. I don't have those notes with me right now, but before the ordinance was passed in that discussion, I believe that's what we were talking about.
Okay, yeah, and like you said, you know, they they charge you a fee. Well, is the fee for for administrative or is it a fee for equipment? See, now that's another thing we have to look at too. Because I I know a few of them charge a separate fee for just the, for equipment.
Let's stick with the topic.
Okay, but I'm just.
Yeah, George Anne.
Kelly, do you have any idea off the top of your head how many people are exempt out of that two hundred and something?
Um, I'm estimating um ten people right now. It's, there's, there's some people that we mail the newsletter directly out to. Roseanne Stark does that, she keeps a separate list. So she did um took it upon herself to do a separate letter to those people just to make the, make them understand and see what their preference was. And so we got a few from there, but a few did want to get their bill emailed.
Okay, let's do a quick round robin here, see if there's any other comments. And then Kelly, will you put out uh from your notes, just emailed the board uh from your previous notes, what the other villages are doing, when you can get to it? Okay, uh, all right, Mary, any thoughts?
No.
Jack?
I I like what George had to say. It's, it sounds like we're gonna possibly table this and do a little more research.
I'll have, I'll leave it as a possibility, yes. I've got to look at, you know, we passed an ordinance on this. Um, I just got to do some homework and then I'll email you all the outcome. The first step would be to not do it on the May first cycle. But I'm not committing to that yet. I don't have enough information at my fingertips. Fair enough?
Yes.
George Anne, anything else?
I was just gonna say that we shouldn't um initiate it on May first if there's some questions that we haven't decided on.
Well, we've actually decided previously, but I'll, I'll get, I'll get back to you.
That we're reconsidering.
Okay, Wally, anything else?
No, you understood, no, I understood what I needed to say.
Okay, George?
Uh, the only other thing might be uh to maybe try the credit for those coming over for a month or two, just to see what happens and then make a decision from there. That's the only additional comment I might have.
All right. I'll get, if you have any particular thoughts, kindly email me. Remember, I'm leaving town next week, uh, but I'll still be able to do my email. Okay, uh, moving on to business, back to the agenda. I need, need a motion to award the twenty twenty-two street resurfacing program to Peter Baker and son for two hundred and five thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety cents. Hands for motion, Wally, second, Jack? Roll call.
Trustees George Duberstein?
Aye.
Christian Oweth?
Aye.
Wally Crease?
Aye.
Mary Koval?
Aye.
Jack Shennowith?
Aye.
And George Anne Duberstein?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I need a motion to award the Deer Point Trails and Cranberry Lake Sanitary Lift Station Improvements Program to Sheriden Plumbing and Sewer for one million fourteen thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Motion, George Anne, second, Wally?
Discussion.
Discussion. None, roll call.
Trustees George Duberstein?
Aye.
Christian Oweth?
Aye.
Wally Crease?
Aye.
Mary Koval?
Aye.
Jack Shennowith?
Aye.
And George Anne Duberstein?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Need a motion for the approval of the contract extension for water billing assistant till April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three for one thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars a month. Motion, Jack, second, Wally, discussion. George Anne?
Does this mean that we're uh giving up looking for an employee for the village?
No, in fact, I offered the position to a candidate uh today, and she has accepted. Her starting date will be May ninth and will be ratified by the bo- board on the May meeting. But this is a person who will do the training, which was what she did with our previous employee. Uh, will do a major part of the training. And depending on how well that goes, we may terminate this contract earlier.
So we'd be able to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call.
Trustees George Duberstein?
Aye.
Christian Oweth?
Aye.
Wally Crease?
Aye.
Mary Koval?
Aye.
Jack Shennowith?
Aye.
And George Anne Duberstein?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Need a motion for the approval of appropriation ordinance for fiscal year May twenty twenty-two to April twenty twenty-three. George with the motion, second, Mary. Roll call.
Discussion.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustees George Duberstein?
Aye.
Christian Oweth?
Aye.
Wally Crease?
Aye.
Mary Koval?
Aye.
Jack Shennowith?
Aye.
And George Anne Duberstein?
Aye.
Motion carried, ordinance number twenty-two dash four dash three two nine.
Need a motion for the approval of the budget for fiscal year May twenty-two to April twenty-three. George first, Wally second, discussion. None, roll call.
Trustees George Duberstein?
Aye.
Christian Oweth?
Aye.
Wally Crease?
Aye.
Mary Koval?
Aye.
Jack Shennowith?
Aye.
And George Anne Duberstein?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion to raise, for raise recommendations of three percent effective May first for.
Wait, you forgot the rev estimate is revenue.
No, I decided to pass it. Motion for the approval of the estimate of revenue fiscal year May twenty-two, April twenty-three. George Anne, motion, and Jack second. Roll call.
Trustees George Duberstein?
Aye.
Christian Oweth?
Aye.
Wally Crease?
Aye.
Mary Koval?
Aye.
Jack Shennowith?
Aye.
And George Anne Duberstein?
Aye.
Motion carried.
George?
Uh, just a comment for the benefit of our uh viewers uh online and also in your village hall. You notice that we uh have little discussion on many of these items. That's because we get a packet ahead of time and can look and do research on the items that that are covered, and we have any questions, we can bring them up beforehand in it i- in a lot of cases. So it's not that we're just lightly passing stuff.
All along, I thought it was my personality.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Back on track. I need a motion for the raised recommendation, three percent effective May first for Tim Seiler, Adam Blankenhorn, Kelly Hensley, Roseanne Stark, and Kelly Metzler. Motion from Jack, second from Wally, discussion. Roll call.
Trustees George Duberstein?
Aye.
Christian Oweth?
Aye.
Wally Crease?
Aye.
Mary Koval?
Aye.
Jack Shennowith?
Aye.
And George Anne Duberstein?
Aye.
Did you say aye?
I did, basically.
Okay, thank you. Motion carried.
Watch out, Kathy.
Okay. I need a motion to prove the ordinance authorizing the disposal of personal property no longer necessary or useful to the village. George on the motion, Mary on the second, discussion. Roll call.
Trustees George Duberstein?
Aye.
Christian Oweth?
Aye.
Wally Crease?
Aye.
Mary Koval?
Aye.
Jack Shennowith?
Aye.
And George Anne Duberstein?
Aye.
Motion carried, ordinance number twenty-two dash four dash three three zero.
A little explanation on number nine before we proceed with the motion. We're treating this as a consent agenda. If there is an item you wish to discuss after a motion and a second, we'll remove it from this list and go to it after the remainder of the motion is voted on. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the following contracts, all of which are included in the budget we just passed. Motion, Mary? Second? Wally? Discussion. Jack?
Item H, the twelve thousand dollars for the gathering place.
You want it removed and discussed independently? Okay, Kathy, do we need a motion on that or we just do it?
Uh, just do it.
Okay.
Cause we'll talk, yeah.
Done, uh, George Anne?
J.
Done. Any other?
What, what is J?
That's Pentagon, Pentagon, whatever.
Pentagra?
Pentagon.
Boardroom audio video system.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so those two items have been removed for further discussion. We've had a motion and a second. Any other comments? Roll call.
So we have a motion from Mary and Wally, and do you both agree that we're gonna remove item H and item J?
Verbal, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so uh trustees George Duberstein?
Aye.
Christian Oweth?
Aye.
Wally Crease?
Aye.
Mary Koval?
Aye.
Jack Shennowith?
Aye.
And George Anne Duberstein?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, uh, for discussion purposes, I'll take a motion and second on H, and then we'll go to discussion and then vote yea or nay. All right, so I need a motion, George Anne, second, Chris, discussion, Jack?
We just got done doing this and and I was going through the budget, and we spent about twelve grand on on the the landscaping there. And a couple of years later, we're gonna spend another twelve grand because we don't like the way it looks. I've got a problem with that. I think it's being really irresponsible. That's, that's, that's pretty much it. I I I I don't think we given it its its full time uh as as suggested.
Okay, other discussion? George Anne?
I just want to uh reiterate that we're not undoing anything that we've already done. This is just something that we're adding to um to make the prairie area more formalized and um to be more distinctive.
Is this?
Go ahead, Jack.
Will this impact, cause we, we did some work back there for the um the monarch butterflies, correct? Is this gonna impact that area at all?
I'm, I'm, again, I didn't quite understand your question, Jack.
We, 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 we created an area for the monarch butterflies.
Correct.
Is this area included?
Okay, George Anne?
This will not affect um what we've done for the monarch butterfly. We um, all the plants that we have in the more formal garden are all um pollen.
Butterfly friendly?
Yes, thank you. And um, and the same thing is with the prairie and the and the plants that we're planning to add are also ones that will attract the butterflies.
Are we planning on removing any plants?
No.
Uh, back up half a step, uh, where the paths are gonna go, that will be herbicited and woodchips put in. Uh, you've probably saw on the packet the the, I think it was a rust colored line. Those would all be additional paths. So obviously, whatever is there will be gone.
Sure. I, I just don't see how this is really necessary.
Okay, fair enough. Other comments?
The so we're basically leaving the 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 native plants that are around also, and we're gonna be leaving them as they are and just put paths in there with certain other plantings with it. So are we really making it more appear, you know, more, how would you say? Appealing, right, yeah.
What? I'll I'll address this first, George Anne, then you can step in afterwards. What we're doing is planting, the paths break it up into quadrants. We will be over, we will be planting plugs, two species in each quadrant in a pattern of a wave, is how Dave Eubanks. So there would be a lot more consistent color and consistent planting in those quadrants among the current prairie plantings. George Anne, accurate?
Yes, there they will, Dave will be more selective in the prairie plants that he keeps and those that are more weedy looking would be herbicited so that we would have the even the prairie look a little more formal.
Other comments?
Again.
Chris?
I just wanted to say that I think this twelve thousand dollars can be spent on other things within the village and not constantly being used in the planting of more plants.
Okay, other comments? Jack, did you have a closing?
No, I'm.
Okay, all right, roll call, please.
We we don't have a motion.
Yeah, we do. We have.
Okay.
Yeah, so trustees George Duberstein.
This is.
If I. I would, we proceed with the twelve thousand dollar expenditure to replant, and nay would be, we don't.
Okay, aye.
Christian Oweth.
Nay.
Wally Crease.
Nay.
Mary Koval.
I'm gonna say nay.
Jack Chenoweth.
Nay.
And George Anne Duberstein.
Aye.
So we have two ayes and four nays, so the motion does not pass.
All right, thank you all. I need a motion to approve the Pentagram Assistant Proposal for eighteen thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars for the boardroom audio visual system. Wally, second. Mary, discussion. Let's see, George or George Anne, whom should it be? George? George?
What will this? I mean, I've read the the whole proposal and I'm kind of glazed over by looking at it. What is it actually gonna give us above and beyond what we're doing right now?
Okay.
That justifies us spending eighteen thousand dollars?
Only the six of you can justify it, but I'll tell you what we're looking at. And Kathy, if you remember beyond me, please feel the jump in. One of the things, one of the concerns that I know you've had and I've had is anytime we have a guest speaker with our current camera system, they're never on it. This would have a a camera mounted up on the back ceiling that will be controllable by a device sitting in front of me and Kathy. It'll be improved link to our TV. It will be, it will be the recorder for the meeting, the entire meeting with a a direct video saving to the device we'll have behind the dais. It'll be. Let's see, we didn't go with improved speakers. It's mostly linking the TV to the camera and electronic control system behind the dais.
And this is gonna cost us eighteen thousand dollars to do that?
Yes, at least that's what the proposal is. Kathy?
So in your packet, there is a scope of work and there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight items that is going to be, or if it's voted through, would be for the the room. Right now, when you have a speaker, you can't see the speaker because the camera does not move.
Well, this camera will move?
Yes.
We can pan it.
Yes, and our old system, Jerry, do you remember? Is it it's from two thousand five? Our system right now.
That's the rack and all the stuff underneath the table.
Right.
What would be we be getting rid of?
Well, let's see, I'm looking at the scope of work and I'll go through it quickly. We'd have the new control system, video recording system, PTC, the PTC camera on the back wall, which would connect directly to our control panel and can pan, tilt, zoom. It would be an improved quality and be it be HTM. HDMI, excuse me.
Aye.
HDMI.
We wouldn't be replacing the the TV, however, correct?
No, no.
Have we have we looked at any other company to do this, like even a Best Buy Geek Squad does stuff like this? I mean, how did we focus on this particular company?
I I'm struggling to remember because this has been quite a few months ago. I know I went out and looked at, I contacted at least two different companies about improving it. And somehow ended, I I'm sorry, I can't, I I don't recall beyond that, George.
Okay.
Kathy?
This company is a reputable company that most villages use. And like I said, we've had them since two thousand five when we moved in here. And they work with you, they get it set up, they can come out and tune it if you have any issues. So.
Oh, we've used them before then for something?
We've had them since two thousand five. That's our whole system that we have now.
Oh, okay. George Anne was next, then Wally.
The thing that that I was concerned about in our present system is if somebody puts up a PowerPoint, you can't see it. Would this be able to show a PowerPoint so that it's legible?
Currently. Currently, we can connect a PowerPoint to our TV and it's quite visible. We've had presentations like that, George Anne, since we've added this large TV. The well presentation was done on that.
We can, we can see it just fine, but if we're recording it for anybody else to see, I I don't think that it's visible to to as far as part of the video that we put out.
Two things, either we pan the camera over to focus on the TV and zoom in on it so we can, and there is, I vaguely remember, and I'm not gonna bet my paycheck on it, that we can record directly from the TV, excuse me, to video that we could post. Wally was next, and I'll come back to you, George Anne. Wally?
Well, does this have the capability of expanding to live streaming at the time instead of just recording it and then posting it onto Facebook and all that other stuff or YouTube? Or another and which would also probably say, well, if that's the case, and you had your, you had your PowerPoint product, you know, presentation could be put onto it right away, too. So in other words, you'd go right down to our down to our our network down there and say, okay, hey, here, come online, it's right, it's on right now.
The original forty thousand dollar proposal had that option.
Okay.
But we rejected it right off the bat, knowing that wouldn't fly.
Okay, what I'm saying now, what I'm asking is, could this system be upgraded in the near future to do that?
I could only assume yes, since this is a kind of a downgrade from what they originally proposed. George Anne, and then Kathy.
I understand that we need a change from what we have. However, I was looking online, I mean, on our website to see how many people actually watch our videos. And it's barely double digits. I think the most there was was twenty three at one month. I would like to pursue Best Buy and companies of that nature just to see what they have, if it could be comparable at all. Because I think eighteen thousand dollars for, you know, a half a dozen people to see this is pretty expensive.
Okay, Kathy, then Jack?
No, I I was just gonna say that I've had, I think, one or two residents contact me when I haven't posted a meeting immediately after the meeting, asking me when it will be up because they can't attend a live stream or just the the meeting. And they do look at the YouTube meetings online, that's all.
All right, thank you, Jack.
Just. It's it seems to me like a a second camera and a switch would be a lot less expensive than nineteen thousand dollars.
Okay. All right, any other comment, George?
You had mentioned earlier that you might have looked at one other company as well. What kind of presentation did they have and what was the cost?
They never provided a proposal. I don't, I can't say I pursued it that much either for lack of contact, too long ago for me to remember, George. Okay, any other comments or discussion? Okay, roll call.
Oh, Jesus.
Okay, George Duberstein.
I don't know. I I I like the idea that we need to upgrade our system. There's no question about that. I just, I wonder if we could maybe table it for a month to see if somebody like Best Buy or whatever could do a similar thing for a lot less.
Instead of taking it, let let's vote on it one way or the other. If it's voted down, I'll do more research.
Okay, so I'll nay.
Christian Oweth.
Nay.
Wally Crease.
Nay.
Mary Koval.
I'll say nay.
Jack Chenoweth.
Nay.
And George Anne Duberstein.
Nay.
Motion not carried.
I think that's the first time we've had an unanimous, an unanimous nay since I've been mayor.
Yeah.
I failed somewhere. Okay.
You're slipping.
All right, we're gonna have to close the meeting a little bit differently. For the sake of being on a Zoom meeting, I need a motion to adjourn. So wait a second, Jack, roll call.
Trustees George Duberstein.
Aye.
Christian Oweth.
Aye.
Wally Crease.
Aye.
Mary Koval.
Aye.
Jack Chenoweth.
Aye.
And George Anne Duberstein.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you all for putting up with this approach. Hopefully, we'll all be healthy by the end of May and can be back in here. Closing the meeting.
At seven thirty three.
Seven thirty, good night, all.
Good night.